You're watching CHCO TV's gavel-to-gavel coverage of the April 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Municipal District of St. Stephen. I'm Florence Mitchell. Today's meeting begins with an official flag presentation on behalf of the Basque Tumagati people by councillor Eastman. Under New Business, Committee will receive updates on community safety, the Milltown Ball Field, and the world's oldest basketball court. Committee will also discuss composition of council. Finally, Committee will review drafts of the crosswalk policy, reserves management policy, non-union full-time employee vacation policy, and the tourism accommodation levy bylaw. Now let's join Committee in the Moosehead Room at the Garselin Civic Centre in St. Stephen.
All right, good evening. Municipal District of St. Stephen Committee of the Whole Agenda for Wednesday, April 9th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Call to order, oh, we got councillor missing on the screen. Is she behind me? Oh, she's just not in front of me. Hi, Marg.
Hi.
I gotta get you in front of me so I can see ya. All right, as Jeff's doing that, before we begin, I'd like to respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered today on ancestral unceded territory of the Basque Tumagati people. And, do you have that with you?
I do.
Okay, and we have a presentation by councillor Eastman. It's an official presentation of the Basque Tumagati people flag.
Yeah, just to bring this into some focus here, about two months ago, someone tweaked me on one of our council meetings that I thought about the Basque Tumagati tribe here, and I was wondering how come they were never really involved in anything that was going around the municipality. So I did some exploring here and dragged my cohort with me, and we got ahold of the representation, which is John Ames, and with John, I reached out to him and I says, you know, how would you like, or how would we like to include the native tribe here and to, you know, looking after or sharing some of our pain, I guess, in the municipality? And he said, well, we're not really sure how to do this. And I said, well, let's start with a flag. And I said, so we can show the people that we... Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, so as it says, Skudik Basque Tumagati, and I'm not sure what the symbols represent, but yeah, they were more than happy to turn this over to the council to put up on a poll. So the first anybody noticing that it's new, then they can ask questions.
They have a wonderful website.
Yeah.
All right. Wow, you're almost up to that better than me.
Just follow the lines.
Oh, okay. Follow the line, okay. Hold on, my mother used to give me a kiss there after we got the sheet folded.
Better look to your mother.
Thanks, you're all beautiful. Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate you meeting with them, and let's see where it goes. Let's start with the flag, as you say, so, thank you. Okay, now down to the next business is, I need a mover and second for the agenda of the Committee of the Whole Meeting, April 9th, 2025, be approved. Deputy Mayor Wheaton, councillor Heisler, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, thank you. Any conflicts of interest this evening? Okay, seeing none. I will take another mover and second for the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held on March 12th, 2025, be approved as presented. Councillor Harding. Councillor Eastman, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. All righty, again, a mover and second or to move into New Business?
So who?
Councillor Eastman, Deputy Mayor Wheaton. We'll start with community safety update. And, as you can see in your package, we have the survey going around, and I would just like to say, I'd encourage everyone to fill that out so we can get all that data, and that way with that data, I can ask for more funds when needed and make changes that may be needed. And, anyway, encourage people to fill that out. And, what else we have? We have... Oh, sorry, question, yes, there's all allowed to have questions here, that's right, sorry.
Thank you. I was just wondering if administration could give us an update, do they have any data on how many have taken part so far, or what kind of response we've been getting? Not answers, but participation.
Couple hundred, I might ask, but I don't know where we're at now, see if this will happen.
Yeah, we had the contractor give us the summary this morning. We have total submissions of 238. We had about 200 about three days in, and then response rate has kind of dropped off because we'll have to hopefully make another push for people to get those in. Basic rough breakdown, about 40% of the submissions that actually identified where they were from were from Ward Two. Ward One is about nearly 30%. Ward Three is around 20%, and it wasn't a mandatory field, so some people have chosen to skip the question or identify something else, so. But, so there's, we are getting rurals, urbans, it's a nice mix there, we just wish we had higher total numbers. The consultant did say about 200 makes it statistically relevant in her field, but the more we get, the better the data becomes. So definitely, if you're out there and you can work your networks to encourage people to take a few minutes of their valuable time, it's going to really help the end product the more submissions we get.
Deputy Mayor Wheaton?
Is it only online? No, I guess I just read it on there, so get printed copies, because I know people that would fill them out that are not online, right? So I could pass them out.
You can pick them up at the front counter, if that's what I was told, yeah. Okay, councillor Greenlaw?
Yeah, just to reiterate, it is very important that we have a high response on this for the accuracy. There were some glitches early on in it, I believe, where if you started it and you left it, it would, you know, it would close you out, and then you couldn't get back in. I believe those things have been fixed, so you can take your time doing it now, but I would encourage everybody, everybody that you possibly know, to tell them to do this. We'd like to see like 1,000 responses, not 250. So please, please do it.
Okay. Does there one over there? No? Okay. All right, well, I was going to wrap up with that, Wade, but exactly, I'd like to see some more, the more data the better, it gives us more power to attack the issues that we have to take, and if we have the strength of the community behind it, it's very beneficial. And, not in the package, but under community safety, I have a meeting, I believe, tomorrow night with the RCMP, with the region, that is, so I'll have more to report probably in our next report.
Priority meeting?
Yeah. Okay, so, community safety, now is the Milltown Ball Field update in the package. There's a statement from MB Power about the ball field, when I say ball field, sorry, the Milltown Ball Field where the dam was. Anyway, so, I'll just read the email, just so the public can hear it, it says, "With spring upon us and warmer weather around the corner, we've had a few inquiries about opening up the ball field, the Milltown Ball Field. We have taken a number of steps in dealing with the remediation work at the site post-construction and have capped, restored, capped and restored the ball field. In most recent discussions, the Department of Environment and local government, they have requested additional work before we can open the ball field for public use. Because of the high traffic area on the road leading down to the ball field and the parking area for the ball field, a strong cap is required to cover the existing contaminants associated with these areas. So a possible solution being considered is to pave the road and parking lot, which would act as a strong cap. It is, if this is deemed an acceptable approach, it is our understanding that this could be carried out towards the end of May. This is when the asphalt plants open and the Department of Transportation, Infrastructure, Road Constructions are lifted." So once the plants open up, they'll start doing the work, and if it's an acceptable approach deemed by the proper departments. "We anticipate that the asphalt may also need to sit a few days. That said, the battlefield, the ball field, it's been a battlefield, folks. The ball field may be available for you starting mid to late June 2025. Of course, this is only an estimate at this time, however, we will continue to focus on the work to get the ball field open as soon as possible." And they'll keep us posted on the progress. Any questions, please don't hesitate to contact MB Power. And I don't know if anyone, probably can't see the ball field that well, but it's a beautiful ball field, they did a great job, all new fencing, new dugout, I'm sure Marg has seen it, it's right in her back door yard. I'm looking forward to getting that opened up, because they're going to be really excited. I mean, it's top-notch, it's very professional, it is nice. So hats off to the contractors that did that for MB Power where they're in there, kind of alleviate the pain. Yeah?
Do you have a question?
Deputy Mayor?
Who's going to be responsible for it? I mean, you can't just open it and people go play there, is that what the idea is, or...
Yeah, we got to find out who owns it, and that's another thing we got to get ironed out.
They do.
Yeah, I know they do.
I know, but I mean, if you have teams that want to come and play, and like, who would they contact?
Who's responsible?
Yeah, right, and the upkeep of it, there'd be a certain amount of upkeep.
Yeah, of course. Well, maybe that might be a deal with MB Power we can have, hopefully it's an easier discussion than the other ones we have.
We haven't been approached to put anybody down.
So, yeah, maybe I'll...
The school has.
Councillor Eastman?
School has. Have they, yeah.
Say, that won't make it any easier.
The last meeting that I attended, it was quite a while ago, but the school didn't seem, they were also asking the same questions that I was asking, right? And by the end of June, school will be out, right? So it's not...
Yes. Oh, no, no, you don't have to stop for it, I can get her next.
No, I was just saying, by the end of June, school is out, right? So that kind of leaves them out, right?
Councillor Harding?
Thank you, worship. On the same thing, not about the ball field, but I don't know, I think probably councillor Heisler would know, but today is the day that Bob Scott retires from MB Power, and I got a note from him yesterday asking me if I could write a little congratulatory speech for Bob, since he and his family used to come to the house all the time and watch the water before it went. Anyway, so I did that, but I'm sure that probably councillor Heisler knows that since he's on the committee. Thank you.
Yes, good to hear you bring that up, and just, if anyone doesn't know, Bob Scott worked for MB Power, he was our communication guy when we dealt with any issues. He did all their social, or their media stuff and dealing with big contracts and municipalities, and he's been A1, like, you could call him in the 3:00 o'clock in the morning, that guy would answer the phone and help you out and get the services needed whenever he could do it, but he did a great job, so. And I also got to write something up too there, Marg, maybe we'll get together, put it together. All right, thank you. Okay, so ball field, okay, next is conserve the court, conserve the court world oldest basketball court update.
I'll give you a little bit of a verbal update, I mean, I did send an email around, and the first couple were a little bit administrative, so I won't go over those, but they did, they just had a significant event, I've seen the pictures, I mean, the Raptors rolled it out for Susan Holt, our premier, so she was up there at the time, so that worked out really well, and a lot of dignitaries and everything there, and it's just to spread the word to the other parts of the world, right? And, you know, and to drum up some support from up in Toronto area and across Canada. And I think one of the other ones, he said, they're meeting Canadian press on Thursday, this Thursday, to do a story about the court and focusing on the Canadiana and the impact on the small town of Canada, and the RDC and the Tourism New Brunswick reps are coming to the court. They were at the court last week, so that's for their interest and support, so that's moving along, and then this is the fourth annual Archie this year, it's hard to believe it's been four years for that golf tournament, so that's going to happen the 7th, 8th, 9th in August, and details are on the website, we do have a website, WOBC, and as you just said, the interest level, this is from Richard Holden, the interest level is certainly heating up, so it does, as you bring more people into it, other people tell other people, and it seems to spread the word quite fast, especially when you're talking with, you know, an NBA team, and they meet a lot of different people, so everybody's starting to get a little heated up there up in Ontario now, so that'll be, that's great for us. That'll be about it, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Heisler. Questions? Okay, next up is consideration of the composition of council. I will, maybe, you want to start with you, Jeff, maybe, just kind of explain, explain the bylaws it is and local governments?
Sure, thank you, worship. The impetus of the report came from actually two different sources. One, a member of council asked that we consider having a conversation. Right about the same, about the exact same time, we had a meeting, Mayor and I had a meeting with Minister Kennedy and his team, and it came up in the duration of our conversations regarding the composition of council and how big council was and whether that was appropriate or not, and so it was kind of good timing. The other thing, Minister Kennedy's team, the Assistant Deputy Minister, indicated to me that in the very near future, a memo is coming out from the department on this particular issue. Many communities are currently taking a good look at the size of their council, how they're set up, largely because a lot of the new councils were created through forced amalgamations and weren't created by the community themselves, they were created by transition facilitators and small advisory councils that worked on it. So you'll note, and I pointed this out to the mayor this afternoon, there is no recommendation in the report that's in front of you, I tried to, it's really administratively outside of some of the costing, it doesn't have a lot of administrative impact, but I did want to provide Committee with enough information to have an informed dialogue on the subject. So what you have in front of you is a covering report, trying to lay out some of the history that we went through at the advisory committee table with our transition facilitator. I included two different reports, the report that I provided to the members of the advisory team to show some of the many options that I sat at my desk and scribbled and came up with different ideas, and then the report that the Committee actually forwarded to the transition facilitator as to how we got to the council we have today. I also included in there for considerations, the direct transcripts from the Act, so you can see the process there, and just some financial considerations as to, so you have a good sense of what a council costs in your budget on an annual basis. That stipends, that's, you know, travel, registration for conferences, all those expenses, just to try and give you, you know, some numbers to work with in your dialogues. But with that, I don't have too much more unless there's direct questions on the material, because as I say, this is definitely strongly a policy decision of the council and the community, and I don't want to sway that one way or another from administration.
Thank you, Jeff. Something I brought up to Jeff earlier today, too, there is the direct cost savings on having less council members, obviously, but there's also the, what I brought up to Jeff today was our council chamber, how we're tight in here, that would probably alleviate the stresses on us, and we might not have to invest dollars, like we've been talking about, to get a bigger council room so we can better deal with our, like, our setup is, it's just, it is what it is, we can't deal with it because of the size of this room, but if we had less, we could redesign it and maybe still bill stay put, but that would have to depend on if we go less, so I just want that math put in your head as well, and I'll open up the floor for discussion. Councillor Eastman?
Yeah, I read this all over type thing, and nowhere's really have we envisioned population growth. We do have population growth since the amalgamation, big time, especially in Ward Three. They're all down 170 or Hills Point or even down the ledge road. So again, you know, when you're talking about the voter parity, I mean, we're going to be off, you know, on that for numbers.
So when you, just, I just want to continue on with Earl, or councillor Eastman, so you're saying if the numbers decrease, then that would bring up, to bring us to a spot where we would need a certain amount of councillors? Right. Okay, councillor Wright?
I was kind of taking the other tack, councillor Eastman. I was going to say, I've looked at the composition of some of the larger cities, and we're pushing almost the number of some of the cities for how many people we have sitting at the council table, so I was looking at it and going, it makes sense to have a smaller council. I think the size of this one was based on the fact that the former town of St. Stephen, from reading the reports, had seven at the table, which seemed kind of large for our community, anyway, but it was what council selected, so I'm in favor of taking it down to the two from Ward Two and one from each of the rural wards, but that's, again, I know we're not voting, I'm just saying, I was thinking, I was looking at it based on other communities and what their council composition looks like in compared to our total population.
I did that as well, and you're right, it's, councillor Greenlaw?
Yeah, during the amalgamation process, I think the transition facilitator there noted that best practices are typically between 1,000 and 1,500 people per councillor, so we still have some room for population growth, right? Even if we drop, right? If you drop to six councillors, you still, you'd still have 9,000, right? So, and then you got to look at the factor whether we want a full-time mayor, because the job has become very complex, and a lot of different issues to deal with, so that should be factored in as well in whatever final discussions we have. But I feel that, you know, that we could reduce by a couple of councillors and use the funds from the reduced number of councillors to help with funding a full-time mayor position, just my opinion.
So, I just got, I just, that full-time mayor thing, I just want to get an understanding, how many hours do you consider a full-time?
Oh, well, yeah, you're putting more than full-time hours in now, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, I was just having fun, sorry. Councillor Rotis?
The one thing I'll say as a new councillor is having a larger council population is helpful, because if you have a smaller population, let's say we all ran again, but there was half as many of us, and the newly elected ones from this particular term were elected again, like, I still feel like I'm just getting on my feet, so I do like the fact that coming into this, we already had seasoned councillors around the table, and I found it really helpful, so that's one thing I think that's important. And the other thing is, I'm, I actually feel that rather than viewing it as full-time versus part-time mayor, I view it as like the heaviness of the responsibility, and I can tell you that as a councillor, I feel like, mental health-wise, this job is almost, you know, equitable to being a full-time social worker in palliative care. So for me, I think it's more about just compensating the mayor for not only just the significant amount of work, but like, everything that goes into it and all the heat that sometimes a mayor has to take, and councillors have to take too, but I have noticed there's just a change in the political environment, and I would just like to see mayors be compensated more for their time. And you can see by Mayor McCackren's reports, they're massive, and it is healthy as well to have people that are working and retired both on the council. I'm not opposed to people continuing to work and do the job, because I think it's important, it's, it kind of spreads out your network and it keeps you in the reality of understanding like a working-class perspective and then also a retiree perspective, so, I don't know, there's so many factors to consider, but I would just like to see the mayor position, you know, compensated a little better.
I'm going to speak a little more on that. Couple weeks ago, we were in Fredericton at the UMB, and there's 117 of us there, and every mayor in the province is there, and that was the big talk about the responsibility after amalgamation, and not just amalgamation, sorry, the responsibilities that municipalities have taken up, like, all this economic development through our region, and like, it has grown. And there's this one mayor, he was saying, like, he was literally, he was joking, but he said, he went to the three MLAs in his area and said, "I want your EA money, your EA money, and your EA money, because I'm doing your work." And that's what it's boiled down to, is the municipality has taken up that work for provincial stuff, and it's very well talked about up there. And the other thing I did, when you talk about remuneration, when we went through this amalgamation, there were some numbers given to us, and I looked at it at the time, and I'm thinking, no way, like, I literally took the lowest number they offered, and that's, and I said, "I'm not taking that." But what I come to find out, when I'm talking to my, that my other municipalities are the same size, they're all making a lot more, and said I was crazy, but I didn't realize the compensation part, but anyway, that's up for the next person, I'd like, I'd rather leave it to the next election, but, yeah, but it has been talked about, and it is a serious conversation. Councillor Cornish? I'll get you a second, councillor.
Just to jump in here, so it's three or four of us in here was part of the original group that put this whole thing together, it was good review from way back, but I just looked at it, and I'll just say this about that, I think it's something we got to sit down and talk about, I think it's definitely open for discussion. I think the role of the mayor, whether it's full-time, part-time it is, we got to take in consideration of, some people out there probably are not ready to retire or taking on part-time, we may lose somebody good, if we take a person on full-time, they may be the good or bad, we don't know, but the bottom line is, it's a decision we could make. I'll say this about the rural areas, I don't feel like the rural areas should give up anything, and I'll put it this way, I think the way I've looked at it, Ward One, two, Ward One, two councillors, Ward Three, two councillors, in-town, two councillors, and the mayor at large. And I say that because, over the last four years, I think Ward One and Ward Three councillors spent more time working in-town than they have out-of-town, and the way things are going to be shifting, if, in my crystal ball, if we start taking on more work in the rural areas, like, we may end up having the roads and infrastructure, we don't know, I know you're saying, but the bottom line, we don't know, it's like Donald Trump, we don't know what's going to come out of it. But anyway, considering that, I'd like to see that, I think the councillors and the wards all work for the whole group as it is. So that's my input, is that we could go to six councillors, one mayor, and basically the rural people out there, rural councillors, we've been doing a lot of work in-town to town, so, just another consideration we're talking about.
Okay, just one minute here, councillor Harding, I just want to follow up on that, just put it in perspective, it would be great if we are at that area, I don't think we've grown into the rural-urban, like, there's still some divide on what we're doing rural, like, so I think we still need to keep it equal, I think, when we end up, it'd be nice that we didn't have to, but, and I think we'll get there, but I still think we should be equal parts, but, but anyway, that's up to the vote of council. Councillor Harding?
Thank you, worship. Well, I've read this all over, and with all disclosure, somebody else will be sitting in my seat sometime next year, or at least in May, and I think that what we have now, the status quo, I think works quite well. I think you as a mayor, I think you've done an excellent job, yeah, and we have got along and thinking here once in a while, but yeah, you've done a really good job of keeping this place together between you and Jeff, and I would be happy if it worked for you well, but my time is up, June helps, we talked about it, but I think that we should consider the status quo, and I think so, because even this week, I haven't been in the house in two months, so I haven't run into anyone, but even this week, I have a call, you know, how can you run for councillor? I'd like to run for council, how can you do that? So I explained, there is a lot, there is a lot there is a lot of energy out there for the next election, whether anyone knows it or not. I can honestly say that the people I run into are not happy with this, for whatever reason. Anyway, there's a lot of interest and I think that we should, just a suggestion, should follow the status quo. Yeah, a part, whatever they're, hell, a part-time mayor is, I mean, my God, what's a part-time mayor? Somebody who's up at eight in the morning and go for the day, or what the hell's going on? Anyway, I don't, I don't like this and I don't like any of this. But I think that if we do it, we should go with the status quo. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you, Counsel Harding. Counsel Isop?
Yeah, I was looking at it. I, I can see the status quo. I think that's, personally, I think it's too many. Uh, for parity, I think it should be like three, two, one. That's what it should be between the three of them. That makes sense for the amount of population. But, uh, I know there's a lot of people, you know, I looked at the comments online and I guess eight part-time counselors aren't doing anything now. I don't know what five can do when they get on there too. I don't know. I've seen that. I mean, you could have 25 on there and there's, you know, there's stuff going on, I guess. But I, I like six. I mean, there were six there when we had just the town. Always been six for a long as time. You look at the pictures out there. And to cut it down to like four, I think is a little bit too much. And five's really pushing it, four, you know, so. I think six is a good number with the mayor, so seven altogether. But, I mean, that's the discussions we're going to have down the road. And you already noted that this is not, it could be other scenarios. It could be 10 if you had to, right? I mean, but yeah, I think eight was kind of, I, I've seen other ones too. Even St. Andrews, when they first came in, they had to put a lot in there. And look at the population down there. I think they have, they have, they have eight there. I mean, look at the size compared to here, right? So, uh, and, yeah, so I mean, that's my two cents worth. But I mean, we'll just have further discussions about that later on.
Deputy Mayor?
Um, I think it's, it's been, I've been here when it was six, seven counting the mayor, right? Which I thought was a good number. And this year when we, I found it really large at the beginning. But I think because the amalgamation was really good because it was, it was a big learning curve. But I think now that we have things kind of together, I, I realize it would be a new council, but I think six would be, would work well. I don't know how you would, you could do two, two and two. So I don't know. But I, I think that, what was it, the first one with four counselors? I think it would be too small.
So, yeah, so you could have six and you could have one, one, three, and then two at large. Is that, I got, or one at large, sorry, one at large in the rural area. So that would still, that would still be an even balance rural, urban. And, uh, anyway, that's still more to discuss. It's, it's a, it's a big change. Counselor Wright?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I just want to clarify because it hasn't been done, that the part-time versus full-time mayor. Just, I think what that means in my mind, correct me if I'm wrong, is an expectation that if the mayor's full-time and it's full-time role, they have no other job. Or if they do, that other job is the part-time job that they're not committed to. My problem with that, with setting that expectation is you cut out a whole pool of your population from being able to run. You're basically limiting yourself to people who are already unemployed or who are retired or, and so you might not get, have the ability to have someone with, with connections in the community through the workforce. So I'm not sure that's the best idea for the size of community. Just my two cents, but I wanted that defined as to what I think those two terms were meaning in our discussions.
I agree with your comments. Uh, was that you? Oh, I was already pointing at Counsel Harding again. Yeah, go ahead.
Just a couple of points of, of clarification. Um, if you look at the current bylaw, it's on page 12 of your agenda, um, you'll note that we don't say whether the mayor's part-time or full-time, um, in the bylaw. It was just, we have a mayor elected at large. Um, whether, where part-time, full-time comes in is actually really a, a derive from your remuneration bylaw and whether or not someone would do it full-time for the value in there. Different bylaw, that can be brought forward for review. But the way we've got this set up, whoever gets elected mayor, they, they could do it 80 hours a week, they could do it 15 hours a week, they could do it three, three hours a week. It's, it'll be that person and their, their accountability to the public. Um, so really inside this conversation, in particular, you don't have to make that distinction. It's, we have a mayor. If you want to have that conversation and about remuneration, we can bring that bylaw back for you to, to take another look at. That's not a problem at all. But we don't, you don't have to have that, that debate about whether it's a full-time or a part-time. It's just a mayor is, is there. Um, the other way to talk about, um, you know, the, the, I was giving some thoughts to you just briefly about the, the concept of the rural at large. Um, the other way to do that is to consider doing two, two, two. And some places would have the deputy mayor run as an, as a standalone seat and the mayor run as both at large. But you could also do it that way so that there's, you're actually electing that, that secondary position, um, which is an option. I'm just throwing it out there for your, for your knowledge. Um, that's, you know, that's simple enough. Um, as far as the size, any, any concept of getting bigger, I can pretty much tell you the minister won't approve it, based on our conversations. Um, the minister has indicated there is a certain preference for smaller councils, um, during our conversations. But, um, so I don't think we're, nine is, nine was pushing it when we put it in the, during amalgamation. In fact, the transition facilitator had to go back to Fredericton and have some chats to see if they would even sign off on it. Um, and that had, had to do with balance and everything else that we were trying to do that's in the reports. So, um, don't try and get bigger. And the last thing, just from the con, the conversation, um, I know it's hard to do and we do this in a lot of things we talk about. You have to separate the, the seats from the people that are in them because there could be nine, seven, seven, whatever, however many of completely green, brand-new counselors here. And if you are, still feel like you're in a learning curve, you might not have the experience sitting next to you. So don't rely no so much on that would be my suggestion, just because you don't know how the electorate are going to fill those seats when it would, however many you decide to have. That's
I just, I just want to jump on this a little bit. You, when you mentioned deputy mayor part, which sort of makes sense to me, but the fact is you could have a very strong counselor that if they ran for deputy mayor at large and didn't get in, because they'd be competing with other people running for deputy mayor, but I got that right? Not competing with counselors.
Potential, yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't say two.
Yeah, no, no. But that's why I'm, that's why I'm talking about this. Like you said, we were in committee. I just wanted to try to get my head straight on that too. That would be, it'd be a hard position to try to apply for, or apply for, I guess you're applying, you're running for election. But, uh, yeah, anyway, just give that some thought. No, I got Counsel Cornish here, I think.
Just another thought is that, uh, we now have a cow. We started out as, as assigned portfolios, two for each counselor if I remember right, and then some of us sat on other ones. And I think in order to relieve some of the duties of the mayor, if we went back to maybe a mix of it, whatever, that certain counselors be assigned workload from the mayor or the town manager, call it a portfolio, call it a project manager, whatever. Just a, the example, maybe one of the counselors assigned to look after the, um, the baseball court or the basketball court. Maybe one would, could be assigned, one or more be assigned to like the hotel complex, whatever we have. But I don't think we have used our resources correctly. We migrated to a cow system from a assignable portfolio. And I think we did lose a lot of, I think Alan or Mr. Mayor, you probably took on more load than you should have. You should have probably have signed up over that. So I think if we do go this way, I'm leaning very hard of going back to, uh, assignments of my portfolio. And I don't know how the cow fits in there, whether we still have the cow or we have the portfolio or a mix of it. So I think that should be up for discussion.
I'm just going to clarify, cow is committee of whole. So everyone up there understand. And I, I kind of see where you're going, but I think you picked the wrong titles. Uh, I mean, a committee title, yes. I mean, you could start going down the committee role and, and have a, uh, public safety committee or whatever, but not get into, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I bet you're, I see where you're going. Yeah, it's, you'd have, at the committee levels, like it could be a regional service committee and whatever. Yeah. Counsel Leesman?
Yeah, what, uh, what concerns me about this whole thing is, is eventually we should get here. But I wouldn't, uh, right now, start cutting counselors' positions because we don't know what the government's going to give us next.
Less.
Yeah, right.
No, no.
No, but, yeah, less money, yeah. But, you know, as, uh, Mr. Cornish had said, you know, what happens if we take on the roads and that, you know? And that's, that's the thing where the counselors now will have to be involved in. Money, we can get money, if we can get money, that's, that's great. But I don't assume that we're just going to get it like that. I, I'm assuming that we'll end up taking the responsibilities. But, uh, then we're going to have to sit there and fight for what we want. So I would leave this here for a couple of terms before you come back to it and say, okay, now everything's settled out with this amalgamation crap. And, uh, you know, now we can focus on, you know, smaller areas.
Yeah, I, I, I think we should keep in mind that the powers that be, sometimes we all hate to say this, are trying to get these councils down. They might be politely asking us. I mean, as you can see, just, just this week, actually St. Andrews had the same discussion we're having right now. So that they're already talking about reducing their council too. So it's, it's not something that just come out of the air. It's, it's something that's being pushed from the powers that be. But, uh, so just keep that in mind. Counsel Rotis?
I think if we had kept the initial committees, um, it just would have been such a drain on staff time. Like, I'm already realizing how, how many things drain staff in different directions, just, you know, things that come up that they have to take on suddenly. So the thought of every counselor having kind of different portfolios, I mean, it was a good concept, but I actually like the fact that we can come here and just openly discuss together because then it just helps with communication sharing. The other thing I am grateful for is I, I think my portfolio might have been like, kind of like social welfare of community or, but people te, like people have tagged me along as being a certain way or standing for one particular topic. And I don't, I didn't really enjoy that. Like, I think that as counselors, we have a diverse skillset and we all have something to bring to the table. And, you know, I may care about, um, individuals who are vulnerable and struggling in our community, but I also equally care about economic development. And I think sometimes when you're attached to a portfolio, people assume like that's, that's all this individual counselor is standing for. So I prefer to come together because then we can just talk about some of these tricky topics all as one and get it out there publicly. But I'm relieved, I guess. I could say that I wasn't tagged to community safety or social well-being because it's been so politicized along the way that you can't even have research-based conversation without somebody politicizing it. I mean, most of the things that I speak about, there's statistics and data to back it up, but people don't want to hear that. So I've been grateful that we could talk openly together.
Thank you. Counsel Cornish?
Okay, just for all this, when we're going through all this, uh, information and, uh, data, there's also something we didn't mention. Probably going to, somebody's going to throw a brick at me. But if we cut back on our salary by $2,000, we can cut one person out of, off the list. Or keep them all in the list, but cut back the salary. So we cut back the mayor from whatever it is back to $10,000 and then...
And the board, I can give up my sports card.
Yeah, right, whatever. But the other thing is, people, that is one thing you still have to consider when we're doing something like this. But the other thing is that, uh, I think our constituents got to realize that we meet more than once a month. We meet at least twice a month here and we've, this will be our third meeting this month. It could be a forthcoming, in addition to all the other things we do. It's not a four-hour-a-month thing. It's more like a, for the mayor, it's probably 40 hours and probably the counselors, it could be anywhere, it's between 10 and 20 hours a, a month or more. Depends on what's going on. So that's one thing we've got to mix into the barrel a bit. And then I go back to Mr. Leesman's comment. Uh, I am concerned about the future. And I think Emily also across it, that we grew in the last four years. And, uh, all depends what we get coming in for the next round. But, uh, hopefully there'll be enough of the current ones to stay on to basically, uh, shore up the rest of the council because it's going to be, and I, and I'm almost for, not for, basically cutting it back anymore because we don't know what's coming up in the future. And, uh, we should keep as many as we can for a little bit longer until we see what's going to take place. That's all.
Yeah, just one second, I want to follow up on that a little bit. Yeah, as Jeff mentioned there before, don't, try not to put a face on the counselor because I, I know that there's, that we've, that's been three years. It's crazy, it's been three years. But we have grown to a spot that we're, you know, getting things done. So we're thinking about all of us losing one of us. And, and you got to be careful with that. But anyway, uh, who was it? Was you, Counsel Isop? Sorry.
Yeah, just a little bit of history on the committees. I mean, it worked well with six people when we were here. We, and Marg's, Marg's been on council for quite a while. And we were just kind of more of a, we don't do daily operations, right? So we can't, we don't go daily operations. So we're really, we're just a figurehead of a committee. That's the way I was. I was in Public Works and something else. And Marg was with Fire and Police. And we, we met with them to know what was going on so we could report back to council. But we, we, and we kind of championed different things that they wanted. Like, you know, Marg would go say, yeah, they want a fire truck or they need something. And she'd bring it to council and kind of champion that the whole way through, which she did with the fire truck and everything else. And same with Public Works. When we got that front-end loader, I said, well, really, we should have that snow blower attachment too, because that would be a good thing for safety and everything else downtown. So you kind of go to other counselors, say, will you support me on this? And it worked well with six. But now we're getting into public safety, which we never had before. We're getting into economic development. We're getting into things that we never had committees for before.
We should have our hands off.
And we should have our hands off, really. I mean, and we don't do daily operations. So, so it worked well with six. But when you get into eight and we were getting into two committees each, and then we've seen when we first started, it started to go, then they start to cross over between committees. So it was, it was getting very, very confusing. We weren't getting anything. We could sit for three hours and not get anything really accomplished. Or we get accomplished, but it was, it took you three or four of those committees and joint committees in order to get anything to, done. So, I mean, I think this committee of the whole's worked well. Because even though you were a champion of, like say, Public Works or something, you still did the greater good for the community. So you're still, you're still were involved in the other committees to a certain point and, and you were assigned to different ones, like the world oldest basketball court I was on and Charlotte County Museum and BIA that, you know, the counselors on and, uh, Chamber Commerce. So you still were involved in those and you brought it to council, but you weren't directly involved. You weren't in the trenches, right, type thing. So it did work well, but I think we've grown out of that. There's so many things that we're doing now that's just, it gets too confusing and too convoluted, but, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Counsel Wright?
I was just going to make one follow-up comment that, yes, we are growing. We don't know what the province is going to do, but I come back to our population and how many people are sitting at other councils around the table in comparison, counselors are sitting at other council tables in comparison to population. And we are on the larger side. So I don't think it would hurt us to go down, even as things come at us. And that's my opinion.
Let's see if I can kind of just maybe wrap this up and a gift for Jeff here. So, I've seen a lot of mixed feelings on this, but we got to give our staff a direction to present to us or not. So it, and we're not here voting, but are, is there an interest on leaving it alone as it is? Six counselors, I think is pretty palatable. And, and, and I'm thinking of the community as, as well, not just us. I'm thinking how, how that'll be accepted. And I think the other, to me personally, I think the rest are too low, but I'm not, so then there's the other options of going down to four. And, uh, so what's the appetite to give guidance to our team here to, uh, present something to us to move forward with and then go through that process with the public?
I'd say leave it alone.
Leave it alone?
Six.
Six?
Six plus mayor.
Yeah, oh, yeah. So that, yes, yeah, six plus mayor, six plus mayor.
Six, mayor. Or leave it alone?
Leave it alone. Oh, turn it on, okay.
Well, free of Mark.
I know.
Free of Mark, we got it.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Six plus the mayor.
Okay. Counsel Harding? Hold on.
Leave it alone.
Leave, oh, leave, leave.
The tie break, buddy.
Leave. And, and I voted already. So it's still a tie, isn't it?
No.
No, because it's none of us.
It's none of you.
Oh, I already voted. Like, I, I said...
You have your time.
Okay, so, okay. So, so I didn't count myself in the, after I heard the other leave it alone. I thought, okay. All right, so.
Well, just ask you.
Yeah, but again, we're not, so this is, this is, so we're close enough that we should still, it still deserves conversation. But I, I go with six would be palatable for the public.
So we'll have two options to go down.
So, yes.
Based on what I'm hearing, perhaps what we need to do is administration, do up a report with some concepts around this six-plus-one system, whether, we can give you a few different layouts of how that might look, much like I've done, did for the committee back in the day, run some, run some scenarios, bring it back to committee next month. You guys can look at it and then decide whether or not you wish to move forward on either, whether staying status quo or, or moving forward on the other option. But I, I've just, you might, it might help the discussion to see some of the, the seven total member concepts and decide if one of those fits or, or not. And so rather than just trying to do it out of the air and, and visualize it yourselves, get some stuff on paper for you to kick around and debate, and then you might be in a better position to make a, a decision for the, for the next term.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, just one second. So, so actually, like, I was concerned with giving you guys a lot of different scenarios. So really, you only have one scenario to come up with. We already got the existing one. So you just got to show us what the six is, if that is the rural council. I mean, because I don't want the work getting done if we're not gonna do it. But it also gives, gives the, the public out there, they've, they heard this tonight, so let that go through and let them come to all you guys and you'll get your feedback, you know, when we're out and about. Do you want?
Just one thing, I just... Get a clarification on it, maybe it's, maybe you already discussed it and I missed it. But we were talking about a full-time mayor, part-time mayor, which you are now, but you're still full-time, work all that. But there probably should be open for discussion somehow whether that would work, not work, get some input of some sort because that question has been asked different times. So I just think, don't think we should forget about it. But stop, there. Go ahead.
I actually was just looking at this thinking, why can't we just remove the language of part-time, full-time, anything? I mean, I just think it's eight councilors, one mayor, and, I mean, the people vote. So, you know, if, if you know the person that you want to be mayor is somebody who works full-time, full-time, then, I mean, just vote somebody who doesn't. But I, I do agree with, can't remember which counselor said it, but maybe, maybe Counselor Eastman. But taking, you're taking a huge pool away, right? You're taking a huge pool of your population away. And I mean, I like the fact that we have a diverse council here of, you know, even like Deputy Mayor Wheaton and I working together. It's nice when I'm working full-time during the day. She's able to support me with things and then we can trade off. And that, that's a really great partnership to have when you have different people with different flexibilities. So I would just like to remove that language, if it's possible, altogether. And you just vote, vote for a mayor, a counselor. And, I mean, I don't think you can actually put a number of hours on it because every single month I've been here, it's been totally different. I mean, your, every single month for you has just gone up and up and up and up. If anything, you probably need a maximum of where that cuts off. But yeah, I just, I don't even think you could put, you could define part-time and full-time based on just not knowing what each month is gonna bring. Yeah.
Confused by the councilor's comments and the fact that the words "part-time" doesn't appear in the bylaw. I don't know what, what language they want us to remove.
The option one, option two.
Oh, you mean in your actual bylaw?
Yeah, not, not, sorry, not in the bylaw itself, but in the options here. Just part-time counselor, part-time mayor, just because we've been, we've been talking about part-time versus full-time. So yes, not, not addressing the bylaw, but the, just as part, option one, two, and three. And I'm just making a note to the public, like, I really don't think there is such time as part-time versus full-time because every month, every hour, every day, every week is different. It, it all feels full-time to me, but I don't know. Just shedding light on that.
Oh, oh, sorry. Yeah, so, yeah, just some clarity on that. Yeah, I, definitely the part-time, full-time, we gotta, it's, it's, I think it's irrelevant. We just gotta elect, elect individuals that's gonna do the job. And, and for clarity, whether you call it part-time or full-time, it's every night there's a meeting. You're attending a meeting every night, and a lot of times includes weekends. So just, I don't want to scare people from running for that position, but it's, it is a lot, so just, but it's not daytime. So it's not like you're gonna come in here at 8:00 in the morning, punch in and, and do your stuff. A lot of the stuff is, the meetings are at night. You're gonna follow other municipalities too because we're all meeting at night. Deputy Mayor?
If we do make a change, we have to decide like six months before the election? Am I correct in that? Yeah, okay. So we have a little bit of time.
Good time, yeah. Well, let it, this, this, I think we got a consensus on, oh, sorry. Counsel Eastman?
Yeah, I just want to bring it to light that the package that Jeff and I are working on for the new councilors, I mean, this can be really drilled down. So when people come and pick up, who are interested, pick up their package, it can lay it right out on what you consider what your work hours will be and blah, 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 and blah. So that's one of the reasons we were engaged in this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good, I'm thinking that if, alongside the, the report on the seven-member council, I'll bring back the remuneration bylaw alongside it because as much as they're, they're separate, as your conversation tonight has clearly indicated, they're closely interrelated. And it'd be good to look at them side by side as we're, as you're debating this. So we'll bring that back as well for, if, if that's the will of committee.
Thank you. Good conversation. Let's actually, well, let's, let's fly around and have some discussion with your constituents. Okay. Next up, draft crosswalk policy. Everyone saw the package, it's pretty much laid out. Is there, I don't know if Jeff wants to say anything first, or do you wanna go ahead? I mean, it's all in there. Go ahead.
I think the ideal is, is really good, but I think in a community like ours, it maybe isn't as cut and dry as it would be in, in a city that has neighborhoods, often based on school catchments or wherever, where you live in this neighborhood. I think it'd be hard to, hard to, I guess, police, for lack of a better word, who decides who the neighbors are. And I know a policy is supposed to be broad, I understand that. But my, my other thought was crosswalks only exist in the urban core. So it leaves out a whole segment of our population in the municipality being able to have a set. So my thoughts on this were set aside ones that no matter where you live in the community, you're probably gonna see those crosswalks because there are streets in this town that I never go on. So I wouldn't see them, couldn't participate in them as a rural dweller. But if we set aside three, say, for example, or two or one, however, and we say, everybody can make a suggestion and you get a mix of signatures, set that, set that number from urban and rural, and then you can make it, perhaps it would be exciting for the community to come up with new ideas all the time and everybody can contribute. The other thing that I was thinking is that for ease of, ease of implementation, keep it sweet and simple. When you have it in, it's, we don't give the option for the permanent one, just paint. And then the next year, somebody else can do something. My concern, I have a lot of concerns, who decides what's cultural versus heritage? Like, if somebody wanted to do chocolates or ice cream, would that be considered, in the case of chocolates, could that be considered, you know, corporate, a nod to corporate, a corporation in our town? Or corporate branding? So I, I am concerned that there's just a lot of chance for hurt feelings. And then if it comes to council, then hurt feelings get caused when council makes a decision. So I do like the idea that if we're going to allow colored crosswalks of whatever stripe, whatever theme, that everybody in the municipality can take part by setting apart the crosswalks that everybody can have a chance to have an idea on. It's just my thought.
Counsel Cornish?
Let me, I guess just cut to the chase. I think this should be black and white, the way they've been, their safety issue. Everybody understands them. And lots of times you come along, no matter where it is, you see this thing, yeah, it looks like a crosswalk, it looks like a lot of paint, too. As far as I'm concerned, crosswalks, remove the, move the, remove the advertisement off the street and go back to the, what they're used to go for. Because if we don't, pretty soon we're gonna be painting the lines along the road in different colors and whatever it is. So I say we go back to basics, go back to black and white.
Counsel Rotis?
Once again, I am a statistics-based individual. So if you actually look at data on diversity, equity, and inclusion in inclusive communities versus non-inclusive communities, the economic development statistics are better. You have more diverse populations moving to your community. You have population growth. You have lower risks of suicide, better mental health outcomes for youth. So, I mean, it's important to remember it's not just a color when it comes to equity and inclusion. There are lots of kids that I speak to every day who will, in passing, say, "Oh, I never thought that crosswalk would ever be in my community." So you have no idea the difference it makes if you're a youth who's totally isolated and feeling alone and maybe hiding some things. And then to just see that your community and the people that represent your community, at least, they may not necessarily agree or they may have different values and beliefs, but at the end of the day, they're fine with a, you know, a rainbow or they're fine with an orange crosswalk. And it's exactly what we did tonight with the Pascua de Macati flag. I mean, you're literally just promoting the fact that we are a diverse, inclusive community. So once again, politicizing all of this, it's just look at the stats. I mean, look at every single growing municipality or city in this country and you will see inclusive crosswalks. So I'd rather go with the new than kind of move, move backward.
Counsel Harding?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. On page 30 of 40 in this, a colored crosswalk policy, is 3.2 considered grandfathered? Yeah?
Uh, so, yeah, yeah, oh, you're waiting for me? Yeah, no, no, I, no, I got you. No, I, I am just, I, no, I was looking at it earlier today. And it does come off that way, Counsel Harding. But it's, but it's not, because if you look at 3.1, you know, it, it says the same thing. This policy does not include ladder-stair crosswalks. Plus, it doesn't apply to colored crosswalk approved by council. So that, that, well, so that, they're not grandfathered, they were already approved by council. So that's how I interpret that.
Okay, so it's in the grandfather condition?
Well, they're approved by council this time, so... So the ones, I, I would say the ones that exist were approved by council. That's, that, that's what they're protecting there.
And the intention was also, I'm sorry. The intention was also that if there's any, if there's any thing else, like, if you want to do, it's a big anniversary for epilepsy awareness day or whatever, and you want to do one that's purple that year or whatever, council can do it without having to go through all the rigmarole of, of this policy. So it gives, it's, it's a, it's a council control, direct control line so that you can make those decisions as a council as opposed to having to get petitions and all that other stuff figured out. That's why that's there. So that, that's why it was designed. To say, if, no, we, we want to do this one, we're just gonna, you can just, direct staff to do it and it goes and gets done. So that's, that was what it was intended for.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Alan.
Counsel Greenlaw?
Yeah, just a couple of things on the, you know, to the point of the, what's the neighborhood? Somebody's gonna go up with a position, we, we have to define that a little bit more. And the indemnity, it'd be nice to see how we're gonna calculate the indemnity, at least some rough stuff. And then there should be a decommissioning fee as well that's upfront because if it's only there for one year or two years and then they decide not to support it anymore, then it's gonna have to be cleaned up and scraped or changed or whatever. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and as we looked at it, Celeste and I were, were doing the last revisions of this one, that was our last question for the committee as well, is, is how you define neighborhood? It could be as simple as just saying anything within 200 meters of the installation location. Or like making it more specifically defined. So, you know, rather than, neighborhood is a, is a vague term and isn't defined here. But we kind of left it as a vague term undefined because we didn't want to define it for you. We wanted to be, that to be a policy decision. And that was my last question, is what is, what's a neighborhood? Or what's a, what's that sphere of influence around the location that needs to be considered? And that was what we were gonna ask, actually ask you guys.
And just lastly, something in there about how you, how you verify the petition. So somebody just doesn't fill a bunch of names out and submit it?
Yeah, when I first read it, I, I thought when you're doing the neighborhood thing, it's similar, like, if you're putting up a, a building and, and you wanted to go three feet past the height requirement, they had, they literally had you ask the neighbors to get permission. And, and a lot like, same thing for like a fence or something or... So I was thinking along those lines, but yeah, that, but that neighborhood should be a little bigger than that. So we'll have to solidify that some more.
Distance, which is how the Community Planning Act works as well. Everybody within a certain distance gets notified of your, your application for a development permit if, if it requires a, a notification. It's just nice, it's easy, you can stick it in a GIS system and, and circle it and it'll bring you up all the properties that you need to, need to be seeing from, right? So that would be my amendment, or my recommended amendment, if you're gonna go that route.
Counsel Wright?
Thank you. I'll just follow up and say it still leaves out 50% of our municipal population from being able to sponsor a sidewalk. When I make my comments, it's not saying we shouldn't have a rainbow crosswalk or an orange crosswalk. When council adopts a crosswalk and makes it theirs, then there's always emotions involved when a different decision is made. So if council doesn't say, "We are having X crosswalk," it removes the emotions from it when something wants to be changed because there will come a point in time when a future council is going to want to do something different. And then it brings up hurts and it brings up emotion that's challenging. So if we just say, "There are community crosswalks, that these are the ones that we're gonna designate that anybody in the municipality can sponsor." It could be the rainbow flag, it could be the orange crosswalk, it could be any number of things to celebrate our international festival, to celebrate our chocolate festival. Then we're removing emotion from it and there's no chance, or reduces the chance that when a decision needs to be made in the future that council is somehow hurting a population because that's, anybody who knows me knows that's not me. What I am saying is not, cannot be construed as anti-anything. I'm saying let's be inclusive of everybody in our municipality having a chance to sponsor one of the crosswalks. And it could very well be that someone sponsors the rainbow crosswalk forever. That's, I'm not saying let's ban anything, saying let's open it up so that the crosswalks we set aside are p, are crosswalks that everybody in the municipality, including the rural wards, can have a chance on. So that's where I'm coming from. And I hope everybody can understand that.
No, no, so do I. So one of the things we have, are responsible for our citizens as council is to grow and change. And that's something, I, I was part of the first crosswalk they ever came to St. Stephen. And it was, it was not fun, but it was an experience that this, this community needed to get through. We had to get through that. And, and, and other communities did it themselves, but that's how we grow and go through those changes. So to, to not take that responsibility as council, and it's just, sometimes they're tough decisions, but you gotta make them. And, and, and we have to grow and change with, change with the times or whatever, however the word you want to do. But that's, that's our job, so. So you can't take that away from us because we are a voice from the community and a voice... They'll come at you. You'll get your, you'll get your feedback and where you need to go with that. But that's just, that's, that's life and growing and changing. Who was, who mentioned first? Counsel Rotis?
I have an easy solution to that and I would actually love to bring this forward at some point formally, but make a motion to grandfather in the rainbow crosswalk and the indigenous crosswalk and be done with it. And those two are downtown-owned. They are, they are municipally owned. And I don't believe in standing for something and then backing off. Look at the Black Lives Matter initiative, that, the mural that was just totally jackhammered up in DC and the emotions that were brought out from that. So I mean, we can argue that these conversation or conversations are tough, but nothing in history has ever, we've never grown and changed through easy times. We have to have conflict and we have to have these conversations in order to build and grow and change. And I mean, that's been my favorite part personally on this council is, you know, knowing that Counselor Wright and I, or any counselor, we don't, we don't see eye to eye on every single thing, but there is a certain level of respect and there is a value to it. I mean, for... I mean, for me, it, it makes me definitely feel like I'm totally included, not just, you know, professionally, but personally as well. And my experiences are recognized and that hardship's recognized, and that, that would be the same for the Pascua Makati people or veterans or, so, I mean, I actually, like, I want to let you know that too, Counselor Wright, that even though we may have differing opinions on certain things, or we may have different visions in terms of like how we represent diversity and equity and inclusion and things like that, it doesn't mean that we can't have these tough conversations and grow from them. And I think most people I talk to, they've found this really healing, to be able to have a council that has these conversations, rather than just, like, avoid the awkwardness and difficulty of it. I found it to be really amazing to have these conversations and talk about it. And so, I do like the idea of potentially kind of having an, I like to, to be statistics-based too, and I'm not opposed to, like you doing some research, Jeff, and saying like, you know, in, in Canada right now, in inclusive communities across Canada, these are kind of the staples of the community that they're doing to represent that, and multicultural initiatives and things like that. And then everything else could be an application. It's hard to remove something when you've implemented it, because that, that's just like going back and forward and back and forward, so I'd like to just move forward and be done with it.
Was that a motion on the floor, Counsel Otis?
There's a motion.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes. But for the next, for the next meeting, Jill?
Oh, you had me at just stopping where we're at, like, because who knows what our next change is. That's, I go back to what I said, we got to be, we got to be ready and prepared to take those decisions, whatever the next one comes out, that's as far as I'm concerned. So, Counsel Eastman?
I think the intent of this whole thing to start with was, hey, well, not only a motion, but it, but its cost. Its cost for ideas that come up from individuals that end up being a town, a town cost. And just to, to, not to throw holes in your theory there, but I take the Legion for example, and it's just because I'm involved in it quite a bit, is that not all my people in the Legion are from town. A lot of them are rural. So, if I wanted to put a crosswalk up, the town sponsors it by the Legion, or the Legion sponsors it, it's coming both from rural and it's coming from, from in-town people. So, the whole intent of this thing too, what I understood it to be, was not an individual saying, "I'm going to come up and pay for frigging crosswalk," it was a group, an organization, to get together and make that decision, that they're going to, you know, they're going to fund it and then they're going to fix it and, and everything. So, therefore, you don't need to grandfather anything. You know, you just could get organized and get your organization together and say, "This is what we're going to do."
So, kind of how, what stirred this up was, right, like a week before Remembrance Day, this crosswalk idea come flying through our communities across Canada, and everyone, and everyone expected that to be done today, and it was too cold, and, and no one had a plan. And this, this is exactly what this is, to put the onus on groups to come forward and ask us to do something, and this way, there's, there is a policy in place. So, that gives us a groundhog. In the end of the day, council does vote for it, so maybe we could fix that up some, but, but you're right, it's, it's, it was to get, and to take the cost and the burden off the taxpayer to a, to a point, right? Yeah, yeah. It was to put the onus on, and find out how much people wanted it, but anyway, okay.
Just one final.
Sure, Counsel Wright?
Just going to make one final point, when this was brought to council, I believe Jeff said the wording was, in particular, so that there could be an applicant, and if it was a group of neighbors who wanted to do it, it didn't have to be a formal group or organization to make the request. So, in that case, that's where I come back to my point of allowing a citizen of the rural areas, because they don't have crosswalks out there. So, they're not in the neighborhood. So, if someone wanted to honor the veterans or make, or honor any other part of our culture or heritage, there's no way for them to do that, because they don't have crosswalks in their neighborhood, which is why my point was coming back to designating ones that anybody could apply for. And that's not excluding anything, it's making it all inclusive. So, that's all, I just wanted to clarify that it was for individuals as well.
Okay, so. So, Counsel Harding.
Thank you. Well, before I leave here tonight, I would really like to know, is this three point two, you say no, but is it a grandfathered proposition? Because I really believe that the rainbow crosswalk is one of the best proposals that I've made since I've been on council. So, I would be really, really upset if anything happened. And I think that if it's not grandfathered, it should be.
So, here's my, sorry, I, I am going to share, a, as mayor, I don't know how, what you guys hear in your, in your, in your world as counselors, but if I searched this on my email right now, it would totally surprise you how many great comments I got over the rainbow crosswalk, and I'm not talking in our community, across Canada, people reached out. So, it, it, and it goes to what you're saying, it does show inclusiveness and diversity and, and people like want to come, and so, there is value in that. And, and the same goes for the Indigenous crosswalk, too. And I got, I got people in my community that are very concerned with it being kept up and all that thing, too, or someone made a black mark on it, and can you get that done? I have, I've been to see Jeff three times, you know, you know? And so, so that, that brings you back to what Counsel Eastman's saying, so we do have to get something in place. But yes, like, I'm going to use the word, it is grandfathered in there for the, for the, for the existing ones, because council voted on for them. So, I'll call, I'll call it grandfathered to help make you feel better at home there.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. So, we had a pretty, pretty good discussion on it, and I, and I understand the complexities of it, folks, and I appreciate the dialogue. All right. Next one is a big item, draft, reserves, and management policy. Let's talk about money for a while. It's money in the bank money, though, it's always fun to have reserves, if we can get it there. All right, you, okay, Jeff?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, the, the, kind of the origins of this draft, it relates to a council strategic goal of having fully funded multi-year plans for capital specifically. But really, in order to do that well, one of the foundational pieces is to have a really good grasp on our reserves and how they're being managed, and how, how funds are being identified and put away for various things. I tried to lay out in the report some of the nuances that are somewhat unique to New Brunswick, when it comes to reserves. One of the big things, and I, and I did take the opportunity to discuss it with Minister Kennedy and his staff, relates to the, the limit on our operating reserve. As noted in the report, it's, you know, GFOA, Government Financial Officers of America, which is, there's a Canadian version, but they, they use a lot of the, the American best practices, says that we should, we should be putting away about 17% of our annual budget should be held in an operating reserve to deal with the ups and flows of things you don't expect. Our friends at GNB and their legislation has decided that 5% is a much, is a much better number. I did have the opportunity, thanks to mayors, to allow me to talk to Minister Kennedy and his, and his team, to discuss that situation, and it was received positively, I will say, from the minister and his team. They understand that some changes need to happen within the Local Governance Act, not, and so I was putting this on their list of to-do items. But as it stands today, we do have a cap of, of the 5%. And so, we have unofficially, administratively, made a target of maximizing that operating fund on an annual basis as best we can. The other part of this is, really, the way the act is written, we're allowed to have a operating reserve and a capital reserve. And all your money goes into these two pots. And it doesn't matter if you're putting it away for a ladder truck, or if you're putting it away to buy a new pickup truck, it all gets lumped into the same account, as it were, the way it's currently done. Well, and we rely on some scribbles on, in the margins of a ledger or something like that to say, "Oh, this, this donation was actually by this council eight years ago that never got spent, and it was for this thing that we probably don't need anymore", to be honest with you. We're trying to grow up and get away from those days, is what this policy's trying to do. And, so, we're trying to create a system within the government framework where we can accurately show you on an annual basis how much money you've got set aside for reserves and what that money is actually designed to be there for. And there's a bunch of stuff on our, on our list of things that have been there for, I'm going to say something probably over a decade, that, the note has never come off, and that note, that money could easily be reassigned to a more appropriate goal. So, we would, if a policy like this was in place, we would be able to be able to show you, show the public, where their money is, what it's sitting there for, attach a multi-year plan to it, attach a target goal for, what I usually do when I set up these is I say, "Here's the account, here's the account description of what it's for, here's the target number we want to hold in that account." And, and it may take five years for us to build up to that level, but we've identified the target, we've identified how it's going to be spent, and everybody knows what it's there for. And then when we come to budget time and we're saying, well, now we want to draw from the reserve, it's very easy for you folks to look at it and go, "Does it meet the intent of that money? Is the money there? And does it make sense on the plan? Great, perfect." And, so, it's about, it's about growing up, it's about some of the really good work that Frank and his team have been doing in corporate services to modernize how we, how we do things. And so, I'm really, I'm really excited about the ability to implement this, if you're, if you're willing to pass this along to council for adoption. But I do think it's going to give us a great opportunity to be far more transparent with the public and far more meticulous in how we put money in and how we take money out of the reserve. And I think it's, it's a great accountability tool for you to make sure that we're, guys like Frank and I are doing our, the right things back in the offices when you're not around.
So, I'll just add some layman's terms to that, so, so, in the end of the day, council has to vote to remove the money out of those reserves, so it's still, it's protected money. It, it also, it helps our municipality be more fiscally responsible, you know, when you, it helps reduce incurred debt and moral money, which is a challenge at 5%, as we discussed with the minister, too. It'd be nice to be able to go more, so we can be even more fiscally responsible, but that's the challenge, we got to stay within the 5%. Well, that's what we got to do. But, let's, yeah, I, I'm in support of this, this package as well, so, our policy, I should say. Is there any, Counsel Greenlaw?
Yeah, 100% in support of this, I think it's a great idea, goes along with asset management. If we need money, we set it aside, so it's ready, it's there when we need it. Pool liner is a good example, we know we need a new pool liner in 10 years, we put money aside for that, so we're not running around borrowing, trying to find it somewhere. One, one quick question, on operational reserves, or operational surpluses, how do we handle the operational surpluses? Like, for instance, you know, this year's operational surplus, where will it go?
So, basically, as I articulated to Counsel Greenlaw earlier in an email, the operational surpluses, if, if everything goes according to the plan that Frank and I are working, those big operational surpluses that you get every two years are going to dry up. And the reason they're going to dry up is because Frank and his team have been, are going to be on top of the books, and when we get to the end of a calendar year, which is also your fiscal year, we're going to have a good sense of where all of our accounts sit, and we're going to know whether or not we have a surplus. At that time, we will bring forward recommendations to you as to what the surplus, we'll show you what the surplus is, and what accounts, specific accounts, we are, and how much we think you should put into each of these accounts. So, it might be, we would like to put so much into fleet replacement, so much into major capital for a fire hall replacement, or, so at the, in December, you'd make a bunch of motions, moving money into those accounts specifically for those targeted investments. And then, so, and it would be in there in the very next year if you needed to take it back out, as opposed to two years down the road, which is what we've been doing now. So, you're not going to see in your budget that second-year surplus line, which has, was 900,000 this year and could be, Frank and I were talking, we were still being audited, but it's probably going to be over three-quarters of a million this year. If we're doing our job right, you're not going to see those anymore, because you're going to be doing that, you're going to deal with that money in December, when we're, when we're wrapping up our year-end type work, and dedicating that funds to wherever it goes. Now, the other part of it is, that number, if we're doing our job right, as we keep moving forward, is going to also start to shrink, right? Because we're now in a position to start looking at these trend analysis, where's this surplus being generated from? And dropping, and bringing back the budgets that are, that are, obviously, something's over, of being too generously budgeted for one reason or another, and pull that, pull those numbers down as far as bringing down tax rates, bringing down all those things that, why collect the money if we don't actually need it? The flip side will be that in that budget, you're going to have, we're going to be asking you for dedicated, budgeted, direct investments into your reserves. So, we might be saying, "Okay, we've been over-budgeting for overtime in public works, because the weather is not as bad as it used to be, so we're going to drop that." But you can probably expect that we're going to say, over in our contributions to reserve lines, that we're going to say, "We would like you to put at least some portion of that, those, that drop back into the, to the future funding." And if, if the government is nice enough to, to give us more room in the operational reserve, that's, that's why one of those accounts is tax rate stabilization, so you don't have those ups and downs based on what's going on. We can just kind of, if we have a bad winter, we, instead of over-budgeting for it, we just know we can draw from the reserve that year to balance out that, that little peak, and next year, we'll see how it goes. And when we have a good year, we put the money back in the reserve. So, more opportunities to do that. But that's, in an ideal world, surpluses will be very small and really inconsequential when we're done.
Can you explain to us and the public, let's say we did earmark a reserve for, I'll just say fire truck, because we've done it before, and I get a call and there's a good funding available from the feds or the province for X, or for, for the fire truck, I'm going to stay on the fire truck. And then we already reserve money, we, how easy is that to change the earmark to a pumper truck or, or something out of their job?
So, if, if the money's staying, once it's in the capital, it stays in the capital?
Yes.
We don't move it from capital to operating, we just don't do that. Now, when we have these accounts that are being proposed by this, by this policy, moving it from one account to another account is a resolution of council. So, you guys can make that decision, because we didn't, we no longer need it here, whatever, you know, the, the shed that we are going to replace actually burnt down and we've got insurance money for it, great. We don't need that money, we come to you, say, "Okay, here's our recommendation, let's take it off of, out of that and move it over to something else." And we, you guys would have that debate and decide whether or not you wanted to do that. Once it goes, as you indicated earlier, once it goes in the reserves, it is 100% council's money, we come and we ask permission before we can move it, before we can spend it, you know, even, so it's, it's yours to manage, we're just trying to give you enough tools to manage it in an informed and open way, way better than we're doing, we've been doing over the last number of years.
Sorry, Counsel Wright?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just need to say thanks to Frank and the team, to Jeff for the oversight, and I know, I think the new Questica software, budgeting software is great, and, but it just goes to show us like painting, you know, the door frame in your house, then you realize you've got to paint the wall, and then you paint, realize you've got to paint the ceiling. So, it's one thing leads to another, but seeing all of this come together and seeing the improvements we're making and how it's going to make a more responsive council, more adaptable council. Again, a lot of what this council has had to do because of the, because of the circumstances, including amalgamation, is that framework that's so essential for future councils, and it doesn't, it's not sexy, you know, it's not ribbon-cutting, but we are actually getting a lot done, and it's really important stuff that's really going to impact what we can do in the future. So, just thank you guys for, for being so diligent to carry everything out and bringing stuff like this to us, which just is making everything better and better all the time.
Just one, just one second, I've got to follow that. That's one thing, you know, I know, I don't want to go back to our number of council members, but that is one thing, hopefully, we're setting up that next council to, to not go through a lot of these pains of changes that we've done, we get a lot of these changes done. So, so anyway, I just wanted to say that, it is, it is smoothing out, you know, so that the workload is getting better with the.
Yeah, I totally second Counselor Wright, I was going to say that, too, like, it's, it's really great to see this strategic plan totally coming together, and I mean, we've been talking about this a lot, but now we actually have something that we can put into play. My question was, when it comes to the Community Planning Act, it says that funds received from the sale of land for public purposes, or cash in lieu from developers, are to be paid in a special account, and it has to be used to acquire developed land for public purposes. So, does that mean, like, if one of our strategic goals is to get rid of some of this surplus land, we can't actually take those? land, we can't actually take those funds and put them into the reserves? Or we can, but it has to be used for public land? And what's the difference between, is there a difference between developable, like land that developers can develop on versus, like, I don't, I don't know, like zoning differences, I guess, and what is, what is considered public land?
So depending on the size of a development, if someone wants to come in and bring in and put in a subdivision, a good sized subdivision, under the Community Planning Act, if it's above a certain size, they are required to essentially provide the community with land to say, put a park on it. This is where it came from. The act also, though, allows the municipality, say you don't want a park, you've got too many parks, you can take cash in lieu of that, of that payment. You can say, nope, but give us $30,000 and you don't, and you can have an extra lot and you don't have to give us the park. We can't use that money for anything other than, than buying or working on public land. So creating a park somewhere else perhaps, or expanding a park. What, what you're referring to is some of our surplus lands, whether, we have residential lots, that is just us disposing of an asset. That money can come into wherever you deem it and you guys have a policy for bringing it in and using it in a certain way. But that isn't locked into this thing of public lands. This is a very specific situation, but the reason it's in here is it's the one reserve fund that doesn't fall under the Local Governance, the Local Governance Act, and it's over in the community, hides in the Community Planning Act. And to make sure that we're managing it in an open and transparent way, we want to bring it into this policy and make sure it's identified along with the other ones.
Ready to move on? So, is the will of council to move forward?
Yeah.
All right, you got her. Yeah. All right, next up, draft again, and it's for non-union full-time employee vacation policy. And I'll hand that back to one of you two.
I want to send it back to council, I think, but this one was here, was sent to council. We didn't have a full council, but there was a request to table this back for further dialogue at this committee. So it's not, we haven't amended anything, it's exactly as you've seen it twice previously. But we're, we brought it back at the, due to a motion to refer it to committee again. So I'm going to send it back to those that were, those who are involved in tabling it back to committee and let them talk.
Counselor Greenlaw?
Yeah, so I'm just concerned here, like I think employees need to take, take their vacations, right? Regardless of how busy it is, I think it's, it's essential. And what I'm worried about is somebody, for instance, has four weeks vacation, is busy, they only get two weeks, and then they say, well, I don't have time to take it or I'm not going to take it, then, then they get paid out. So that is, is, in my mind, it's an unfunded liability. We don't budget for two extra weeks of pay for each individual. If you're talking 13 individuals, which I think is what you said last time, there was roughly 13 non-union, if everybody cashed in two weeks, it'd be 26 weeks pay or almost a halftime, you know, full effective person. So I'm concerned about this. What I'd like to see is something where, for instance, you can carry your vacation over until the end of March of the following year, right? And then you'd have that time to take it. If you request vacation and it's denied because of, of, you know, operational constraints, then you can carry it on until the end of the year, but you would be expected to take your vacation.
Is there a comment from over there on, no? You don't have to, I'm not putting you on your spot, but...
Related to the fact that there are two, there are two elements to this, and one is, you know, I think a lot of people would love to take that vacation, that three, that three weeks or four weeks or, in some cases even five weeks. And, and I'm not saying that, you know, the staff, we have a lot of our staff that do take that time. And they'll take it, you know, a day here, a day there, maybe even a week, and then break up the rest. But we have other staff in both union and non-union where it's a, it's a challenge just because of the workload to get that time. The second part of this is that some of us, myself included, build up lieu time. And so sometimes it's not so much that we're not taking that time, but we're taking that time against the lieu time. So it's a combination of both. So I, I think what this is designed to do, because this really does follow in a lot of ways what we're doing with the, with the, our union contract. In fact, this is built on that and not, that model. So, and the idea there is that we, even with the union, we have staff that, for whatever reason, find it difficult. I mean, if you're, if you're getting four or five weeks vacation a year, that's a lot of vacation to try to, to work into when you're dealing with maybe a limit, you know, if you're, if you're a part of the streets crew and summertime, you're, you're cleaning the streets, in the wintertime, you're plowing the streets, it may be difficult to get that time to actually take. And so in fairness, this is designed as well to prevent people from having to build that up to, I mean, you say an unfunded liability, and from a cash perspective, that's true. But we've got cases in the past where that liability has been up to $60,000, $70,000. And so this was designed to try to minimize that impact while still allowing for the fact that people for legitimate reasons are not using this as a bank, but are used, but legitimately can't find the time to, to actually, to take that time before the end of the year. You know, we've got staff in there that, you know, we've got one or two people that are actually doing a particular job, and if they're not there for three weeks, it's going to have a real impact. And it's, you know, so you still got, you still have to deal with them fairly, and I think that's what this is trying to do. And yes, I don't think that we've got any staff that don't want to take that time. I don't think it's about using this as a bank, but, but in fairness, sometimes it's difficult.
Counselor Otis?
I guess for me, like in an ideal world, the ship would sail so smoothly that if you took five weeks, you'd be fine. Like I think we should actually think about it that way, that we need to actually have a municipality where if somebody does take five weeks, we're fine. And for me, I guess, like from my own employment, I just know that we are just expected to take it no matter what. And then if we want additional time, we have an opportunity, if you've been there a year or longer, to purchase it prorated up to, I think it's an additional week a year. So I agree with Counselor Greenlaw on this. I would like to see it just that people take their vacation and that we actually find a way to ensure that things keep running because it is super important for staff burnout. And I just think that we underestimate the value of vacation. Like there's certainly value in banking vacation as well, but there's also value in having to take it. I was talking to somebody this week who just took a week where they were home every day of the week just resting. They weren't going to Dominican or going anywhere special, but they are, they are required to take their vacation. And by the end of the week, you do realize that you probably needed the rest. I mean, some people take vacation, they're sick all week because they're just exhausted, and then they realize on that week off that they needed that time. So, I don't know, I, I, it's challenging for me because I've, I guess I've never been employed in a place where you could roll it over. And, I don't know, I would like to see it for continuity, I guess, and sustainability of our municipality, for people to be able to take what they're allotted and not have any bumps or hurdles. But I understand exactly what you're saying. We have very specific jobs in this municipality. I mean, if Jeff had, you know, 15 weeks vacation and he decided that he was going to go all at once and it just needed to happen, I mean, he doesn't, but, I'm just joking with that. But it's true, like we have very specific jobs. So I do, I do see that point too, Frank. And I also think you need to take vacation as well, no matter what's going on with the Treasury Department. I mean, it's a good kind of, it's, it's a good system here to have, yeah, yeah.
The challenge is, and I agree, but the challenge is that if I decided tomorrow to take three weeks, there's no one else doing that job. And not that I'm indispensable, and I'm sure that, far from it, but in the meantime, there are expectations with regards to what's going to get done and when it's going to get done. And I don't, and I'm not talking just about the audit that we're dealing with now. We move from audit, we're going to move into capital, then we're going to move into budget. And there's really nobody else doing it. And I've got excellent support staff. We're working well with, with Jeff and Celeste and they're assisting, but there are certain expectations. And I'm only one person. I mean, I, we could talk to, whether we're dealing with Jeff's position or Celeste's position or, or anyone. And we're also dealing with recreation, so we're dealing with, this isn't just about my department, this is also about, you know, what's happening with the recreation department and what's happening with, with the non-union staff as a whole. And, you know, the challenge is, yes, we need to take that time, and I do take time. But like I said, I also build up lieu time. And so, you know, and where do you find, you know, three weeks, I'd love to say, I'm going to come in tomorrow and say, I'm taking the next three weeks off because I want to go to a, you know, curling's on this time of year and I love curling. But everything else sort of gets, then you're, while you're away, you know that everything else is building up. So, you know, it, it is difficult and I'd love to be able to do it, but I think it's a challenge.
I also think that this, this new policy we have is getting us partway there to where you guys are pushing to get us. I think, you know, it's just baby steps, but it, it is better than where we're at. Jeff?
Oh, did you? Did you have to say that? Okay, just a sec, or, you go ahead. Just a, just a thought, and it's along the line that you were saying, you know, your worship, that it's a, maybe it can be considered a stop along a path. If, because rightly so, and Frank is, is concerned about the, the growing liabilities, it may be that we could consider putting something like this in place, but put a mandatory review within 24 months to give, if, if the direction from the council is, we want it, we want to get towards the, they absolutely take their vacation, if that's the ultimate goal, put this in as a stopgap to avoid the, the liabilities from climbing and give us, give us 24 months to look at, okay, if we went to a model where essentially, we'll call it use it or lose it, type model, what changes do we need to make administratively to make sure that Frank can take off for two weeks and we can hold the fort? Or, you know, what, you know, some of the, some of the tech stuff we're looking at was going to help, is going to help us, certain positions right now that are critical, will be less critical when things are more automated. And so if we, you know, if we use this as, and we could put it right into the policy that it's a mandatory review in, in 24 months' time, or something like that, it would give us a stopgap to put in place while with a full recognition that we're looking at, at evolving yet again to another model, we just need some time to put some things in place.
Counselor Greenlaw?
Yeah, so that sounds like a, like a, like a reasonable plan forward and, like what I worry about is if you've got all kinds of in lieu time and you've got a bunch of vacation time, then we're not staffed properly, right? We're not staffed properly, right? And if, and if, and if you're a one of, you're a critical position and you can't go away, then we need to, we need to find a way to make it so you can take vacation when, when you want to. So after 24 months of review and hopefully those administrative changes or training or whatever is in, is in a position where we can actually do away with that.
Counselor Wright?
Just going to make one comment too. Oops, sorry, did you say?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just getting the next one.
Okay, thank you. I was just going to say, I, I think a policy is better than no policy. So getting us a good start, and I'm not, I'm not against non-union staff having, having a little something because they don't have the union protection, so maybe having a little benefit of carryover that, that might not otherwise be. My, my challenge, and I'm sure our new payroll software is going to be a help with this, is that if there's any carry forward, that's absolutely reflected in the next year's budget and, and put in there, as, as if it may end up paying out. Because if, let's say it were a $40,000 gross salary and, and it was three weeks, you'd end up paying about 17.3% more as base salary. And then you have to do your matching retirement plan on top of that, and then you have to do your employee deductions on top of that. So it ends up being about almost 23% or more, depending on what the tax bracket is, that's actually paid out toward that salary. So that's, that's my concern, is that it's reflected and accounted for as if it's going to pay out. And if it doesn't, great, but if it does, that, that's, that's part of the payroll budget, payroll budget.
Thank you. Just a, I got one over here, just a sec, Deputy Mayor?
Okay, I, I think it's a good plan as well. And I agree with Emily, everybody needs vacation, right? I mean, I've seen it, like during my working time, sometimes people say, well, you know, I don't need it. And then when they went, it was just like life had really changed, right? So, but I do understand the situation. But being a teacher, of course, when you were out, you had a supply, a person would come in. Do you have, like anybody, like, let's say somebody went out sick, I mean, then you don't have a choice. So do you have people that can come in and replace?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think the, the honest answer to that is, it depends. It depends who it is. It's, you know, Frank is, Frank, Frank is unique, yes, you know, you know, yes, yes, we have, we have Nikki, Nikki that understands, you know, a portion of what Frank does in his office and, and can do some of that. I probably understand some of it and can work with some of it. I'm not an accountant, he's an accountant. He has skills that I don't have and that's, that's why I like working with him. So it's, it's difficult. I think we're, we're getting better at cross-training, we're getting better at figuring that out. And I think that's why, why I'm saying, give us 24 months to figure out, okay, Frank, when you leave, what's critical and who can handle the critical? And whether it's me, if you need, need to train me to do it, do it in HST remittance, show me how to do it, at least give me something to work from and we'll figure it out. But we need time to build those, we've been, you know, you guys all know, we've been scrambling, we've been trying to just barely keep our head above water. Now we're starting to, starting to tread water a bit and we're starting to get more comfortable. Again, the next level of, of evolution is making sure that we can, we can send Frank off on, on a nice vacation to Tahiti and the place doesn't fall apart and it's not all sitting on his desk when he gets back. And I think that's where we need to go. So I think just that little bit of time to figure that out and work with it, I think would be greatly appreciated.
Well, I do not think that's great, but it's... You're talking about taking people that are already here and adding to their position. Like I'm looking at having maybe part-time people out there that can come and, you know, you know, you know what I mean? They, they might be able to do, not be able to do Frank's job, but be able to do somebody else's job here that they could take it in and it would take the stress, you know, especially if it's a long time, right?
I don't want to get too far ahead of this, but I, I talked to a few exciting people today about some new stuff that's happening. So it's not just people that's going to take the stress off because there was something that, that really lit the room up in here today or yesterday. And so there's, these new programs are actually helping a lot. So let's just let, I, I like the, I like the timeline and, and go ahead, Frank.
The other thing that is happening, and we're not getting into too much detail, but I mean, we are bringing on new staff that have backgrounds that might lead to actually better coordination of some of what I do and some of what Nikki does in the office. So we're hiring people that have the right backgrounds. And I think that helps because we mentioned Nikki, well Nikki is, she's excellent, but she needs to go a step further and she's getting there. And we're bringing someone else on that has accounting background and, and hopefully we'll, we'll, we'll be able to use her more than, than what we would have used current staff in the past. So I think that will come. I like Jeff's idea with regards to giving us some time to, to work through. And, and one more thing, I guess in terms of comment that Counselor Wright had indicated, I think this will actually make it easier to budget because we will know what that liability is. Right now, I mean, we certainly know, but the liability, even for what's on the books, changes from year to year based on salaries. We're not going to be carrying that over more than a year, you know, the next year it has to be paid out. So we will know what that liability is, it makes it easier to budget.
All right, let's, we're getting, we're getting right into the weeds of personnel and, oh, is there more, more? So let's be careful on that. Thank you, go ahead, Wade.
I'm not sure, can we cap it at two weeks, two weeks per person? So you kind of force people to take some of their vacation? Can, and can we have a, a report, say after, I don't know, sometime in February to see how much uptake there was on it, just from a budgetary standpoint, to see what, you know, you know, how far we would be, would be over? Is that possible?
Take a note, so...
Yep.
Yep.
Your destination for, for holiday could be...
Sturgis, right?
That's another conversation.
And it's not on the agenda, so let's stop. We've got a lot more to do here tonight, folks. All right, I think we got that to a good spot, so thank you everyone again.
Subject to some of the amendments we talked to tonight, can I... Subject to some of the amendments we talked to tonight, can I bring this to next council? Or do you want it to come back here again?
No, next council.
Council, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, next up, last item on new business, draft tourism economy, accommodation levy bylaw. And are we speaking of it, or just wanna move it on to the next council? I guess it's, unless you...
From our point of view, you've heard, you've heard from citizens that are pro, some citizens are a con, that are con, so we're just looking for feedback and direction from, from committee as to, do we, do we continue, do we shelve it, do we table it until next year, like, just some direction as to how we should be handling the resources.
I'm gonna start it right off, just to help everyone. I, I totally support it, especially after what I found out, after, after getting deep into it and talking with some of my colleagues here around the table, and finding out what's going on around us, and the benefits of moving this municipality forward and supporting events and tourism-type things, it's, it's, I think it's huge, and that takes the stress off the municipal dollars that should be going to, things that they're designed to go to. So anyway, I'm gonna start with that, I totally support it, so I'll just go to Counsel Wright.
Thank you, Mayor, in support, but I just noticed on the second page, it said, I assume this was prepared sooner, it says accommodations, it shall take effect for on, accommodation bookings finalized on or after April 30th, so I just thought maybe that date should be updated before we adopt it, just in case it got missed, that's all, if that, if that's too soon, to have it enforced.
Thank you for that. Counsel Greenlaw?
Yeah, 100% in support. One thing we wanna consider probably is, if reservations are already made, whether we consider those, you know, whether you wanna apply the tax to reservations that are already made. Somebody's got a quote on a thing, so we might wanna exempt that. And then the other thing just to consider is, is, is compliance and how compliance will be enforced. We really want everybody to buy in on this and, and do it really voluntarily, because it, it's got a huge benefit, as you said before, to this community and, and taking it to the next level, enhancing the tourist visit here, and supporting vendors and, and businesses here into, into hosting more and better, better events.
Okay, I think it's go, anyone wanna see this on your next council with the amendment of that date? Oh, is, no, Counsel Wright, do you have anything, or?
Yeah, I do, I completely support it, the X-ray, I think that we will have more ability to have the, you know, other things in the past that, that it supports, oh yeah, I support it fully.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so it looks like we got some movement, so, other than the, the date change, I would say, bring it forward, oh, wait, and the already bookings, I don't know how you tie that into that, but...
Yeah, I was gonna say, some of the, the comments from Counsel Greenlaw are, are well-received, my, from the administrative side of it, my intention was to put out a, a call for help to my friends down the road in St. Andrews, and, and work with Chris on how, how their first year, how they rolled out first year, so their learnings, their, you know, what went good, what went bad, there's always learnings there, and they've been doing it a lot longer than we have, so, we're gonna lean on him for a little bit, and then, once we, once I have that chat, I can tweak the bylaw to, for dates that make sense, and, from the, from those that have been living it for a bit.
Thank you, and good points. All right. Great, again, some more stuff getting done. All right, so, the next proposed resolution is pursuant to Section 68, Bracket 1, the Local Governance Act, council move to close session for the purpose of discussing. Mover and Secretary, please. Counsel Cornish, Counsel Otis, and it's for, yes, it's for a personal matter, yeah. Oh, it's on the next page, sorry, personal matter, okay. Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now moving into close, thank you.